Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Fort.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Bizani.
Here.
Mr. Nikosia.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. At this time, I'm going to ask that you stand as we have our invocation by Pastor Mike Freeman, and after which we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Haley Harthorne.
First, I want to thank you for asking me to come here today and pray over this meeting. So, Father, we just thank you that you've gathered us here today, Lord. Lord, your word in Jeremiah says that you have plans for us and you have a hope and a future for us, Lord. So, Lord, may you just pour out your wisdom on these individuals tonight. And, Lord, may you, as someone mentioned, may this be a quick and an easy meeting tonight. And, Lord, we thank you that we can come to you. We thank you for the weather that we have today, Lord, because all things are from you. And thank you for the people of this community, from the youngest to the oldest, Lord. And as I already asked, Lord, that you would give these people wisdom on making decisions on behalf of these people, Lord. We thank you for them, and we speak blessing over those who are gathered here, Lord. And may you lead them according to your word. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Yes, thank you so much, Pastor Mike, and thank you, Haley, for leading us into our Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we will have approval of our minutes.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adoption of the agenda. Any question? Mr. Steele, anything for your adoption? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
Salute.
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, matters presented by the board. Yes, sir.
We have five, four, five minutes?
Yes, sir.
So, what am I about to say is not an April Fool's joke? So, I sit here this evening, I'm filled with a proud sense of gratitude, pride, and reflection. Tonight marks a moment of transition for me, turning a page of the story of my life, if you will. It's been one of the greatest honors to serve as a member of this fine Board of Supervisors in Gloucester County and to serve the York District and to work alongside so many talented and dedicated individuals and to contribute to the changes that have been shaped past this past future for our county. But I strongly believe in term limits, and it's time to pass the torch to others with new ideas and fresh perspectives and with 12 incredible years of service at this county, and I've been proud of every single one. And so, I'm going to announce that I will not seek reelection in November. I'm proud to say that I'm a conservative libertarian, basically a Jeffersonian conservative. I've been like that all of my life and since I can remember going to first grade. I've always wanted less government, and throughout my 12 years on this board, I sought to vote for small taxes and small government. Our current county administrator, who I have the greatest respect, is carrying the torch of that bold move using her own successful management style. I'm very impressed. Today, our county stands as a model for economic growth and academic excellence through our new superintendent of schools. He's elevated our schools to a new level of excellence. And I take immense pride in knowing that we created an environment where businesses and families can thrive through an inexpensive government and an excellent school system. Looking back, I'm deeply proud of what we've achieved as a board, and these accomplishments are not mine alone, but the result of the collaboration that we do, gentlemen, right here on this podium. And so, gentlemen, I finally want to complete my term. I can say that it's been a privilege and honor to serve with each and every one of you. I'm Mr. Gibson. I know we've had our little quarrels in the past, but I deeply respect our conversations. And I hope the best of luck to you this November for yourself. Lastly, succession planning is a critical component of any successful organization or leadership role, and it's what businesses do, and this is what counties do under Carol Steele's executive leadership. Succession planning ensures continuity, stability, and a smooth transition, and I believe that succession planning is just as vital in public service as it is in business, which is why I took the process of determining my own successor very success, very seriously as I prepared to step away this November, well, actually, the end of December. Because of the recent presidential election, conservatism seems to be a thing now. And at least 65% of this county voted conservatively last November for our new president of the United States. So, that, so to that end, I'm proud to announce that Ms. Shannon Hansen, a generational resident of the York District, will be running to succeed me on the board to represent the York District. She embodies the principles and values that guided my service over the years. She is a true conservative with a deep understanding of ordinances, the political snags and pitfalls, and she shares my ideology as a conservative libertarian. And most importantly, she's a fiscal conservative. I'm confident that she will be a remarkable leader on this board, and I'm fully committed to supporting her, and I will provide all of my resources to advertise her on social media and all other places. To the citizens of the York District, thank you for your allowing me the privilege of serving you. I hope I did you service, and it's been an honor for me beyond measure, and I will always hold this experience close to my heart. Here's to the past we shape and the future we inspire together. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bizani. I'm so glad you and I never had any disagreements.
Well. That's okay. We'll just agree to disagree.
Right, that's what we've done. That wasn't April Fool's.
That's pretty good.
Okay, county administrative items.
Thank you. What first thing is that a little bird told me that Steve Wright, our deputy county administrator, and Mr. Gibson, our Petsworth district representative, just were recipients of a second place, I think, in their different age categories in a race this weekend, so congratulations to them. Like, that's outstanding and glad they're out staying.
I got the award for surviving the race.
You were out there. My days of racing, I think, are long gone.
My grandson got first place in his race. I had to say that.
So, the board had asked that we get Tanya Decker from the Transportation Department. I just wanted to let you all know that she'll be here on the 21st for that board meeting, for the budget meeting. And the last thing I wanted to do was to recognize Lauren Gentry, who you may recognize the last name because she is related to Kevin Gentry, who is the director of our environmental programs. Lauren was recently nominated by Gloucester County and is the recipient. Out of over 60 applications, she is being named as the Hampton Roads 2020-2025, one of the top 20 under 20. We hear about under 30? I said Gentry because, you know, it's so funny. I'm sorry, I've done that. I've sent Kevin Gentry the emails for Kevin Landry. There's Kevin Gentry is Middlesex and Kevin Landry is Gloucester. So, Lauren Landry, my apologies. She, her name is, should be known to all of us for all the things that she's been doing. You may have seen the video that she helped produce with Savannah from our department of community engagement on the Rhone Building and the history of the Rhone store. She also is a member of the National Beta Club. She is the school board representative, so she's at the school board meetings. And she's a member of the Art Honor Society and is a member of a number of other leadership and volunteer organizations. And she's also a certified nursing assistant through the governor's program. So, she is definitely a tremendous, successful young person and deserves to be in that top 20 under 20. So, I want to offer our congratulations to her. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Steele. At this time, we'll.
Didn't even have it down. So, we were just talking about before the meeting started. So, yes, Daffodil Festival this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. The weather is going to be warm. It's going to be great. And everything is looking beautiful and primed and ready. And don't forget the Daffodil Show as well as the festival. Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to scheduled presentations. First up, we have a discussion of financing for capital needs. Ms. Carol Steele, county administrator, and Mr. Ted Cole, senior vice president for Davenport.
Yes, we're so happy to have Mr. Tad Cole with us tonight. And we have been on the phone with him and in, on team's meetings regularly with him and his staff. And you've seen preliminary work that Ms. Callaway developed, and now you're going to see the finals for options for you all to consider for financing. And I think you're going to be very pleased with how the numbers look. So, thank you for coming down, and he's got copies that Maria will hand out to everyone.
Good to see you in person. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. What Maria's passing around is exactly what's on the screen. There will certainly be some slides that will be easier to see in the book. And there are page numbers in the bottom right corner. Again, I'm Ted Cole with Davenport, here to present some information to you all about the financing approach, financing options for the Gloucester Fire Station. I don't think we're looking for any action from you all this evening, but certainly happy to answer questions as we go through this. If you look on page two, let me get this caught up here, okay. There's a few key takeaways here. This is really sort of to set the table. So, what we're going to be talking about is a project that's estimated at $17.5 million. That's in the first bullet, Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue Squad. In Virginia, there's three basic ways that a local government might secure a loan. One, that we call a lease revenue, where the loan is secured by real property. A lease, where it's secured by equipment. Both of those are subject to annual appropriation by you all. So, the debt service on those bonds, you have to put into the budget each year, and you're not compelled to do that legally. You have to appropriate that year by year. There's a mortgage on the facility, essentially. And if you don't make the payment, the lender or the bondholders have rights to take over the mortgage facility to try to recoup their investment. The last is a general obligation bond. You don't have actual physical collateral with a general obligation bond. You are securing that loan or that bond with your taxing authority, requires a bond referendum. As we know, this, this fire station was part of the referendum a few years ago that did not pass. So, going forward in this booklet, what we're going to be talking about specifically is the lease revenue financing structure. And it's a structure of issuing debt that you all have used before, many local governments have used before, and it's generally very well accepted in the marketplace. We're going to talk a little bit about the methodologies of selling that debt, right? So, so the lease revenue structure, a loan secured, and we say loan and bond, we use those interchangeably. A loan or a bond secured by a mortgage on the fire and the fire station itself or the fire and rescue squad facility. So, it's a mortgaged loan. And then, how do, how do we place that debt or how do we sell that debt? We have basically two viable options. We can go to banks through a competitive process and solicit proposals to banks, where you have one lender or one buyer of the entire piece of debt. Or we can put those bonds into the public bond market through an underwriting, and you have multiple investors that would typically buy that bond. The Virginia Resources Authority, which is a state-run program, would normally be a candidate to fund this project, but because of the failed referendum, they have an internal policy that essentially, in this case, would preclude us from using them until the spring of 2027. So, they're really not a viable option in the near term. Okay? Ultimately, when the time comes to decide to move forward with the project and presumably with the financing, you all will have the ability to choose amongst those options, not looking to stake ourselves out on one of those funding options or not. We do know we're going to secure it by the asset, right? That, at this point, that's really the only option if you want to move forward with it. But whether it goes to a bank or through the bond market, we have time on that. All right, the second slide just gives you a high-level overview of direct bank loan, potential advantages and disadvantages, couple of key takeaways there. It is certainly a more straightforward transaction, less moving parts, less documentation, no bond ratings required. You can get a fixed rate pretty quickly in the process so that you don't have a lot of sunk costs or time to get to the market. You can get a funding proposal relatively quickly and then decide to move forward. One of the drawbacks is, is for banks, they're typically limited, not legally, but by business terms. They typically limit themselves to a fixed-rate loan that is 15, maybe 20 years. Every once in a while, you'll see a bank willing to go longer than 20 years, so I wouldn't rule that out, maybe 25 years. But it's, it's more of a rarity, more of an exception than the norm. In the public bond issue, second option there, more moving parts there. There's more documentation required. It's an actual security that's going out into the market. You have an underwriter that is engaged to sell those bonds to investors. There are bond ratings required. There's continuing disclosure required. But we do see regularly those bonds going out fixed-rate 30 years. And, and the public bond market often does give you a more attractive interest rate than the banks, but you've got to do some things to get to the market. So, you have some sunk costs and time to get that public bond mark, public bond to the market. If you were in today, if you were issuing or considering issuing this debt today, the public bond market would give you better interest rates by, you know, a half a percent to a percent. It depends on what the banks do, but that relationship ebbs and flows. So, again, I think as we move this forward, we'll, a time will come where we will revisit the bank and the bond and, and be looking to make a decision, but we're not at that point, at this, at this stage. And then, we, we mentioned VRA, but again, in this particular case, they're not, they're not an option for the timing that we're looking at. Yeah?
Thank, thank you for your presentation so far tonight. I've got a quick question with respect to the public issuance of the bond. And I guess the coupon rate is higher under that public issuance as opposed to the VRA for investors. I was wondering, I just forgot what I was going to ask. I was wondering through the VRA system, that's a tax-free municipal bond to investors, right?
Yeah, yes, sir. All of these, we are, we would assume that this is eligible for tax-exempt financing. So, any of these options, we would take advantage of a governmental, public-use facility, which would qualify for tax-exempt.
And, and would we get a lower rate through the VRA as opposed to a public issuance of bond? Are they one and the same?
Those rates will be very close. You might, you might get a slightly better rate from VRA because they are going to be more highly rated than the county would on its own because they're a creature of the Commonwealth, AAA-rated, and maybe the county ends up being a double-A rated. But they also have some other costs and some annual fees that might make, make them very close to one another.
So, let's, just one last question. So, assuming we take, let's say we take the public issuance of the bond, and we do that bond for two years, because you had mentioned that the Virginia system, they won't participate because of the referendum. Could we then refinance, going back to the lower-rate Virginia, Virginia system, to finance the firehouse at a later time?
It's, it's possible. In the, in the public bond issuance, where you are going out as the county and issuing that debt, the, the standard, if you want to do long-term debt at that time, right? You want to do 20, 25, 30-year debt, the standard would be that you have, you have to wait 10 years to prepay it. Now, if you are purely looking for an interim, short-term loan to get to 2027, there's other things we can do to do that. And I think there's additional analysis we'd want to look at, right? Doing this first short-term loan and then refunding it later through the Virginia Resources Authority. There'll be some duplicative costs. Whether there's a net gain there will depend on what the interest rates would look like in 2027. But it's possible that you could go that route if you determined that was preferable.
So, we can conceivably have the opportunity to retire the first debt and get into the second.
It's, yes, if, if we're going into it knowing that that's the desire, right? With a, with a bank loan or the public bonds, if that's were to be the desire, we would specifically need to set up that early prepayment ahead of time. Because without setting that up ahead of time, you're going to have a longer no-prepayment period.
Following up on Mr. Bizani, if we did that, would the loan that we require, would it require less money in the first couple of years, or would it still be for $17 million? How would that work in the first two years versus the subsequent 2027?
Well, I think, you know, you would be potentially, the way we've modeled this is perhaps you're going out to finance this project this coming fall, right? So, fall of '25. I don't know that you could comfortably anticipate that VRA will approve the credit two years from then. I mean, I don't expect there would be a problem, but I'm not sure I would want to borrow less than you need to fund the project because it's going to be at least two years before VRA could consider taking that loan out, and that construction period would have come and gone. So, I think you're going to have to get the full project amount funded. Now, whether you do that on a short-term basis, a long-term basis, or a long-term basis with some sort of an ability to prepay early, those are all options, but I'm not sure you would want to borrow anything less than you need to complete the project.
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Cole, what roughly would be the expense to the county for us to get rated?
It depends on the size of the bond issue, but there, we would, let's use this as a decent proxy. $20,000 to $25,000 per rating agency. So, you can sell a bond with one rating. Most municipal bonds are sold with two ratings. Some are sold with three. So, I, I think it's safe to assume at this point that you would likely have two ratings. That would maybe be a recommendation. And the, the cost of doing those ratings to get to the bond market, roughly $50,000.
Moody's would be the primary?
Moody's and Standard and Poor's are the two most commonly used. Those are sort of, I can't give you a percentage, but far and away the most commonly used. The third that is often used, but not as much as Fitch. So, I think, and, and, you know, because you don't have a rating at this time, and again, this has nothing to do with the bank loan, right? You don't need a rating for the bank loan. But for the bond market, public issuance, you would. Because you don't have a rating today, you are able to get a confidential rating from them and then make a determination if you want to make that public. So, you, you get to do that because you don't have a rating, and that's a nice, a nice situation to be in when you want to make sure you maximize this opportunity. So, I think it would ultimately make sense to talk to at least two of them on a confidential basis, get the rating, and then make a decision, one or both, to make them public when you go forward with the financing. And, you know, the, the, while the county may not have done a public issuance, again, that's a bond issue into the municipal bond market in their own name in, in a long time. I'm not sure that you've never done it. I think there was a time where that was done years ago. It's done all the time, every week, and it's a, it's a process that we know very well. And while it may be some new steps required compared to how you have issued debt more recently, very doable. Okay? All right, I'm going to keep going. A little bit of a comparison, very high level on page four, direct bank loan versus a county bond issue. Talk about the time sort of from start to finish, 45 to 60 days versus 75 to 90 days. That's not set in stone. It can move a little faster, it can move a little slower. Maximum term with banks typically 20, but I, I certainly can't rule out that if we put a propose, a request out, could we get a 25-year fixed rate from a bank? Possibly. Today, I think that wouldn't be a particularly attractive rate compared to the public market, but it, it may exist, and with the public bond market regularly going out 30 years. The interest rate lock, that is, when do you get the rate in the process? And with, with a bank, you're really getting it on the front end. You're soliciting a proposal. At that point, you've not done a lot of work on the financing. You haven't incurred very many costs at all, and you get a bank proposal, and you get several bank proposals, and there's rates. And if you accept that rate within a week or two, it's locked. So, you really haven't incurred much cost or expended a lot of time. With the bond market, to get to the place where you lock the rate, you need the ratings, you need the documentation. So, there is time and some costs involved in doing that before you actually lock the rate. And during that process, you know, interest rates move up and down, and you just have to sort of work with that, that rate movement. But again, it, it may be, and you'll see this here in a moment, that the, even though it's more time-consuming, it's got more moving parts, and it's got some additional cost of issuance, the rates are such that it is a more attractive form of financing, right? The, the interest rates, at lower interest rates can offset those additional costs and then some. Continuing disclosure with banks, typically, you just need to provide your audit, not much more than that. With the county bond issue, you have to provide audits, and you have to provide other continuing disclosure on an annual basis tied to certain events. It's not terribly onerous, but it is a little more continuing disclosure requirements that, you know, staff would keep up with, little, little higher threshold than what we have typically with banks. And then, at the bottom, just the, generally, typically, the, the parties involved in a transaction. And you can see there, there's a few more moving parts with the bond issue. Okay? So, let's talk about debt service. And on the left-hand side, this is the existing debt, this is already issued debt for the county purposes and for the ineligible school projects. And what I mean by that is not eligible for the sales tax, right? That, that debt is not in here because that's being serviced by that sales tax revenue. So, this is everything else that has to be funded from general fund revenues. And you can see in the current year, fiscal '25, the payment of all of that together is about $3.7 million. It's pretty flat for the next three years, but then you have some, some step downs in the debt. And that's where there's some opportunity, right, to, to layer in some new debt behind there and minimize the impact associated with that new debt. So, that's, that on the left is just giving you a, a perspective of the existing debt that the general fund has to cover, okay? On the right-hand side, we've run a few scenarios, columns, and these are, these are all assuming the public bond market, okay, in current interest rates that we've estimated. We can estimate those pretty accurately. Keep in mind, we're talking about potentially funding this project next fall, so rates are going to move. This is not being run at a planning rate of, say, 5%. It's being run at rates that you could get today. And columns B, C, and D are public bond markets with a final maturity of 20, 25, or 30 years. That market can accommodate all of those. And it, it has debt service, principal, and interest. And it it has debt service, principal and interest, starting in fiscal '27. There is no fiscal '26 payment anticipated here. Because again, the timing of all of this is that we would be borrowing the money when the project is ready, has been bid, and you know the amount of the project. You borrow the money, we're assuming that's happening in the fall of '25, and the first payment would would fall into FY '27. So this is not something that you need to budget for fiscal '26. So B, C, and D is principal beginning in '27. E, F, and G, all we've done is we've delayed principal by one year. Essentially, interest only, principal starts in '28. And again, the bond market can accomplish that or accommodate that, no problem. So what I would suggest you look at is line two, the pricing date. All of these are being priced as if you were selling bonds in November, although we're using current interest rates. The next, I think, important line is line five. When does principal start? The first three scenarios are 2027. The the next three scenarios are '28. That's the main difference between these these two sets of cases. One year of delayed principal. Line eight is the current, what we call true interest cost, TIC. And you can see they range anywhere from a 388 for 20 years to a 430 for 30 years. Those would be tax-exempt, fixed rate for the entire term of the debt, 20, 25, or 30. And and this is the type of debt where after 10 years, you would have the ability to prepay it or refund it in the bond market. Unless we know we're trying to achieve something else, we would typically have a 10-year no-prepayment period. And then line 15, every one of these scenarios is delivering to the county at closing 17 and a half million. That's the estimate we're working with right now for the project. So there's a lot of other numbers in the top, I'm happy to cover any of them. But those are the key takeaways of what these scenarios are doing. And then you can see at the bottom, the annual debt service, that's a combined principal and interest number. And it ranges on the higher end from about 1.3 million, 1.34 million, to about 1,080,000. Again, based on current market interest rates, 25, excuse me, 20, 25, and 30 years. So you can see your annual payment. And then at the very bottom, you can see the total principal plus interest repaid over the life of the loan. And so you can kind of compare, you know, column B and E. That's the 20-year loan, actually, I'm going to do 25. Column C and F. C is 29.2 million, and F is 29.37 million. The difference is we did one year of interest only. And you'll see why we did that in a moment. It helps make this work a little bit better in your budget. Now, it comes at a cost, right, of 29.2 million to 29.37 million. We're talking about about $150,000 to delay principal one year. Okay? And there's nothing magic about that. You could delay principal two years, three years. I'm not suggesting that, but you have a lot of latitude on how you, in the bond market, how you structure that debt. So that's the point here, is to try to give you some perspective on what a 17 and a half million-dollar project would cost if you were to go to the bond market. We're assuming it would be a double-A rated bond. I think that's very reasonable for the county. And again, over 20, 25, and 30 years. I believe what staff has shown you recently is the 25-year option. Again, we're not saying you got to make that decision tonight, but felt like that was a reasonable, a reasonable number to use as maybe our base case. All right? This page, page six, gives you the results. And we've we've put in the gold box the 25-year term, so I'm just going to talk off of that. The the green section of this page is the scenarios where you start principal in 2027, right? So you you borrow the money in the fall of '25, which is FY '26, and you begin making your payments in FY '27, principal and interest. And we've we've measured the affordability of it a few different ways. You will remember, and it's in the back, with the debt you already are servicing, you have a number of sources of funding that go into the debt every year, and you can tie that back to your budget. We're using all of those sources to pay your existing debt, and to the extent there's additional available to pay for this new debt, but it's not enough. And we're short under column C, beginning in 2027, these are projections, about 190,000, the next year about 475, the next year about 97. In total, over those three years, to make this new debt cash flow on top of your existing debt, in addition to the revenues you're already dedicating, you would need over three years about 760,000. Alternatively, you would need about a third of a penny in '27, a half a penny in '28, for a total of about .8 pennies. That's less than one penny, .8 pennies. If you waited to just sort of incrementally raise that revenue in '27 and '28. And then lastly, on line 12, we solved for what if you wanted to do all of this, you did it in the fall of 2025, and in the very next budget, fiscal '27, line 12, you took care of raising or bringing in the new revenue all at once. It would be the equivalent of about .6 pennies. And you can see as you go across, right? The 20-year has a slightly higher need for revenue or a slightly higher tax impact associated. The 30-year, the revenues are lower, the tax impact is lower, but it's an extra five years of interest that you would pay on the loan.
What's the gap of time between the time we sign the debt contract and when we would receive the cash in order for construction to begin?
So you would get everything, if you were going to the bond market, you would take the first two months to get all of the documents pulled together, get the rating in place. At that point, you have not committed yourself to issuing the debt. You've you've got some people working for you that would expect to get compensated. You would then sell the bonds, and at that point, the interest rate is locked. Let's just say that's November 1st. The interest rate is locked on November 1st, and the money would come to you about three weeks later. There's a the full amount all at once. That money would come to you, it would be deposited and invested in your name, and it would be earning interest while you're spending it on the project. And that interest that you would be earning is eligible to be spent on the project.
But if you go back to the page prior, you're using the same interest rate rather whether we get it from a bank or if we do a bond?
We're not. This is just the bond.
But on the prior page?
Which prior page? You talking about page five?
Five.
That, the all of these scenarios are going to the bond market, not bank. Bank rates would be higher today.
The difference, Mr. Hudson, is the '27 or '28?
Okay. Yeah, there there, these are all, we purposely went with the public bond market. The rates are lower. The and we can we can estimate these rates very accurately because there's a lot of very good information available to us every day about where bonds are pricing. This is very accurate as of whatever day we ran this last week. The banks, it's not uncommon when you solicit proposals from banks and you get five proposals from banks that are very sophisticated and well-run, that one of them might be 4%, another one might be 5%, right? It's not uncommon to see. So to to accurately estimate where the banks would lend money is really hard to do. We would give you a range, and we would say we really need to go out and solicit proposals to be certain.
When will we lock in contracts to start construction?
Well, that will be a decision you all will be faced with with when the project is fully designed, when the project goes out to bid, bids come back, and presumably, as part of that, there will be a window of time that you have before that bid expires, right? You have to award the contract.
What's the timeline for that to from from soliciting that and finally getting a contract, which might be higher than the $17 million we're borrowing?
We discussed that the other night. And right now, we haven't seen the site plan come in yet from the fire station, but we're we're assuming at 120 to 180 days. It takes us 30 days to review it, we give it back to their engineer, they do the corrections, we get it back, we review it again and get it back to them. So we're estimating 120 to 180 days from the time they submit the site plan. And they're working on it right now, we had a meeting with them last Wednesday night.
And the bids will go out? How long will it take to get the bids in?
We normally do them for 30 days. Normally, we put something out like that for at least 30 days.
So maybe three-quarters of a year that we might be exposed on higher, higher costs?
Four to seven months.
You you could be, but again, it depends on the market, but we'll be working on it as quickly as we can. We we discussed it with the fire department last week that we're working with them in tandem to try to get this moved through as quickly as we can.
I think the the key point, if I can, is that this process would be better to do with your quote already there. So with your bid awarded, and you write that into the bid solicitation, or they would, it says it's got to be good for so long that allows the time to go get the money because you don't want to go out and borrow a 17.5 and then bid a project and it comes in at 20 million.
Yeah, the the we we've assumed, just for the purposes of this discussion, we borrow the money in November. But you can, you set the timetable for this. It could be any month of the year that you want. So what most local governments, many local governments choose to do is say, "Okay, I need to get my schedule for bidding this project. When does the bid come in?" So now I know the cost. How long do I have to award that contract? How long is that bid going to be held by the contractor? And you would time your borrowing to go to the market when you know the cost and get the money before the window for the bid expiration occurs. So you you got to coordinate between the engineers and the architect's schedule and and this schedule. And what usually happens is we, on the financing side, adapt to their schedule, and we time this whole funding process to land at a point where we we know the cost of the project, and then we get the money, and we provide the money before the the bid expiration. You could borrow tomorrow based on an estimate, but as county administrator said, that that may not work out so well depending on how the bid comes back.
Mr. Cole, so in your gold box on page six, that's also taking into account any retiring debt that we have the next two years?
Yes. Yeah, and I can show you the cash flows associated with that, but it is taking into account the the paydown in your existing debt that we talked about. It's taking into account all the three or so annual revenue sources that you make available for debt. It's taking into account just under $1 million that the the fire and rescue would contribute, about 968,000. All of those are taken into account, and this is the additional dollars needed. And again, it's happening in '27, '28, '29. That's what lines four, five, and six are telling you, how much money you'd need to additional appropriation, let's say, from fund balance, and and get you over the hump until you have some further declines. Or another way to look at it is what's the equivalent pennies on the tax rate that would be needed to plug the gap? And it's it's less than a penny. When you go to the blue section, this is where we've just added one year of interest only. We've delayed principal by a year. You still have to pay interest, but the principal doesn't start until '28. And you'll notice the revenues required are less, right? In '28, it's 430, '29, it's 113,000, so it's 544,000. About, what, 200,000 less than the case above, and the the penny impact is a tad lower. So while the the
I have documentation from last year presentation that's showing that sometime next year, we should have roughly 498,000 in debt service retiring. And then in '27, an additional 400,000. This number just seems to be a little higher than I would think we would be facing. That's that's all, I mean, I have a page out of a budget presentation from last year that shows a debt maturity in '26, and then another one in '27, for a total of $898,000. And now we're looking at another 200,000 to 400,000 in retiring debt or or new debt, additional debt.
Mr. Chair, in in answer to Mr. Crisco, I think if if we can go on with the presentation and you assume for for just a moment that it's correct, then I'd like to have Ms. Callaway get up. We provided the document that states the same thing that was in the document before, so these are accurate figures. But I would love, you know, I think that as long as there's a question in your mind, we need to get it straight. But I don't know if that needs to happen in front of Mr. Cole, but either way, that the board chooses.
I would, I think it's a good jumping off point to go to page 11 because I think this is an important part of the question, but also generally. This is the public issuance, you can see it in the header, the public issuance. It's a 25-year term. We we did, we've got the 20 and the 30, but we didn't include it, happy to send it. And so start on the left, fiscal years beginning in 2026, right? So that's the budget you're working on. Column B as in Boy is 4,100,000. That is a local transfer for debt service. That's current year appropriation that you're currently given, and we're assuming you can do that every year going forward, 4.1 million. Column C is some credits you get from the federal government tied to a stimulus-era bond issue called a qualified school construction bond. That's been in place for a number of years, and that is a credit you get, 230-some thousand. It will end eventually. Column D is some savings that you get from a refunding we did a number of years ago through the Virginia Public School Authority. Those are real dollars that you'll get in terms of savings from the authority, but it will end. And then column E is the one-time contribution from the volunteer fire and rescue of 968,000. So B, C, D, and E are summed up in column F as in Frank. That is the revenues that are running through this model. And I think all of those you can find in your current budget plus the one-time money from the fire, right? It all ties back. Let's look at GHI. G is the existing debt service that is not covered by the sales tax. So it's the county debt and the ineligible school debt. And you can see, right, it's 3.7, and then it starts to step down. So that's, we're we're taking those step downs into account. You've got an agreement with York County under column H for some leases on radios. You can see what those payments are. That also steps down a couple of years from now and eventually goes away. And then column I is the debt for this case. Million one a year, every year, starting in fiscal '27. So GH and I are summed up in J. J is the total requirements. And what you see under column K is we're comparing the revenues under F and the requirements under J, year by year. And in the first year, 2026, you're to the good 968,000. That's the one-time money from the fire. We bank that over here and 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 use it later because in the next three years, you're short in column K. You're short by a million one, but you've got the 968. So you use that to make the payment. And what you really care about is column L. That's where you need another 191 in fiscal '27, then the next year, 475, and then the next year, 97. And at that point, column K goes positive again. So that 968 buys you a year, but then you you have to come up with the 700-and-some thousand over three years. But it's, hopefully, you can see by looking at this detail, we're 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 continuing to fund the debt budget like we have. We're not growing the revenues that are going into that debt budget, and we are taking advantage of the paydown of existing debt obligations. And even with that, we're a little short. Right? And and page 11, under column L, tells you the dollars that you need to make it up. And then you can look at page 12, and that ties back to the pennies on the tax rate that you would need. They're solving for the same thing, just looking at different ways to benchmark the affordability. And then the last, excuse me, the next slide is if you were to do that all at once in fiscal '27. You could do it all in this budget you're working on right now for a third of a penny. But you may not be prepared at this point to do that, right? Because you you don't need that new revenue until 2027. But you could you could take action in your '26 budget if you cared to to set some additional dollars aside and and mitigate the overall impact. Or you just you you wait, if all of this happens, you wait to address that as part of the '27. Or you just, you, you wait. If all of this happens, you wait to address that as part of the 27 and 28 budget. So I'm going to go back because now that you saw that, we've got, you know, we've, oh, I do want to say your, your key debt ratios, if you were to do this, this is the 25-year case. Your key debt ratios would all be intact and your policies. Your, we're, this 17 and a half million dollar borrowing would not put you out of compliance with your policy. So it's, um, you have the capacity to do it within your policies. And it's, it's, um, it's the affordability of it is, is you've got to come up with some additional dollars.
Do we have some numbers on like debt to asset ratio and all of this after we do all the borrowing? Some of the key ratios you would find on a balance sheet or income statement?
Yeah, I mean, this page, I gotta look at, see what page number that is. Thank you. Page 10.
Is that the debt to assess?
Debt to assess value, yeah. The debt outstanding as a percent of your tax base. So you're at about one and a half percent. Bottom one is your debt as a debt service, your annual payment as a percent of budget, we're, you know, six to eight percent. Those are what we look at and the rating agencies look at and others that care when they're looking at the overall leverage of the county. Are we over-leveraged? Are we under-leveraged? You're, you're not over-leveraged. You have the capacity. I guess what I'm saying there is this is all a very reasonable conversation that you might want to fund a project of this size with debt. Doesn't mean you should. I'm not suggesting that, but it's very reasonable to be doing that. I think the other question is, how do you raise the revenue we've identified to, to make those payments?
And so what's the difference in the 10-year payout where the green bars are above our, is that our policy?
Yeah, the, the, the red line, so the 10-year payout is saying how, how much of our existing debt will we pay off in the next 10 years? Forward look. Higher percentage is better because it shows you're amortizing the debt more quickly. You have a policy that says we don't want to fall below 50%. That's the red line. So for this one, the green bars being higher is better. And you want to be above the red line and you are. You're very close early on, but you are. And the lighter green bars are what the payout ratio would be if you did this transaction. The dark green line is where you are today. So if you were to do this transaction, your 10-year payout would come down a little bit because this is long-term debt. But it would still be above your policy. And for that one, higher is better. The other two, lower is better.
Thank you.
So again, just tries to give you a one, one-page summary of, you know, the affordability. What, what, how do we, how do we identify the additional revenues that would be needed? And look, we're working with a lot of assumptions right now. We're working with a 17 and a half million dollar project. We're using current market interest rates. We're assuming this happens in the fall. There's a lot that's going to evolve here on all of those things. But, um, hopefully this gives you some comfort maybe or perspective that, hey, this, this is doable. It's maybe not a slam dunk. We got to deal with some additional revenues likely in another budget or two. But it's reasonably affordable, I think would be a fair characterization. And the last slide we intended to go through is just very high level. Again, this is all backing into a, um, November sale and, and having the money by early December. It just kind of gives you the, the key action items of a direct bank loan on the left and a public issuance on the right. When the time comes, there'll be, you know, a more detailed calendar that we could provide staff. Either way, you know, you all would need to plan on, um, um, you know, a couple of different board actions. Typically with this type of loan, it's secured by the facility. It's called a lease revenue bond. We would typically use the EDA or the IDA as a conduit issuer for that. That's pretty standard in Virginia. They really don't have financial, any, not really. They don't have any financial obligation for the debt. But they are a conduit issuer and, um, you make the payment every year to the bondholders or to the bond trustee and they disperse it to the bondholders. And it's secured by the building. If there were ever a, a board that didn't appropriate the, the payment in a year, the bondholders would have the right to, in layman's terms, foreclose on the facility.
So, so the EDA had, they get to wet their beaks on this opportunity as well?
In terms of charging a fee?
Yes.
I suppose they could. That's would be atypical if they're for a governmental project. Can't say that they, we've never seen it. We have seen it in some places. But rare would it be that a county IDA or EDA would charge a fee to the county to fund a project like this. Now, if a, there was a not-for-profit coming in from somewhere that wanted to do at a hospital or a private school, that's a different matter.
Yes, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Cole, for your presentation. It's very clear and easy to understand. I, I just had a question on securing the bond rating. If we went in that direction and secured that bond rating, looking into the future, would that be advantageous to us as a county to establish that track record and that rating for future projects or?
I, I think it, you could, you could, you could look at that as a potential benefit of, of establishing a bond rating, right? The bond rating typically runs with the debt. So if we were doing the 2025 bond in this case, the bond, the rating we would get would be on the 2025 bonds. And, um, it would stay in place until those bonds retire or are paid off early. Now, if you had that bond outstanding and the rating was assigned to it and three years later, you said, we need to do another project. You would have to get a bond, a rating on that bond issue as well, right? They, they rate the issue, not necessarily the county that is good for every issue in the future. Because every bond is slightly different, right? They might choose to look at a lease revenue bond for a fire station differently than they would a lease revenue for a park project, right? One's extremely, um, essential and one is maybe less essential. So they would, even though it's Gloucester County, they might not look at those two bonds the same way. Because remember, you have to appropriate the debt service every year. And, and from their perspective, it may be easier to walk away in a tough time from a park project than it would a fire station. So that's why they rate the issue.
Mr. Gib, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Hudson.
And this might be for Maria, but how much staff time would be, um, required for, um, continuing disclosures?
It's, it's, um, I mean, you got to do the audit. That's got to be posted. It's, it's relatively, it's, it's really just remembering to post the audit, post the budget. And then there are a series of things that if they occur, right? It doesn't mean they have to do it every year, but let's just say hypothetically, um, one of those events would be, if you have a bond rating and you agree to disclose a, a list of continuing disclosure items, three years later, you borrow money from a bank. And that, that borrowing doesn't have a rating, right? Because you don't need a rating to borrow from a bank. Because you got a bond rating in 25 and you agreed to the disclosure, what that means is 2028, when you do that bank loan, you need to just acknowledge to the, the market that, hey, we did this other loan that's not rated. It's not in the public market, but it's, it's, it's relevant because investors would want to know about it.
But we're not talking anywhere near a full-time staff?
Oh, no, 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 no. We're talking about once or twice a year uploading some files to a, um, a website that is dedicated to municipal disclosure. Although I appreciate you asking, when you get a bond rating, right? We, we go through a process to get that bond rating. And the rating agencies every year, every other year will want to talk to the county, right? Because they established the rating in 25. But that rating is intended to be outstanding for the full term of the debt. So they need to make sure that they're looking at audits, they're looking at budgets, but they are oftentimes want to talk to staff. So there may be a, every year, every other year, a series of questions that we've got to deal with. And maybe you're talking about a couple of days' time to do it, but it's not a full-time job.
Okay. And if we were to get the confidential rating, double A, what is the likelihood that it would stay double A? Once it was, and is there a cost involved with getting?
There's, the, the cost to get the rating the first time was what we talked about earlier.
Confidential?
Yeah, the confidential, right?
That would, that cost?
That cost, yes. And, um, and then if you, you, if you were going to the bond market, you would make that confidential rating public. And then it's out there. But you only pay for the rating once. Uh, you don't pay every year.
Dr. Orth?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So back to page six. All said and done, over the course of this project, for the first few years, we would need anywhere between, um, 544 to 764,000 dollars, correct? That's what we would have to come up in addition to.
In addition to what you're already budgeting. Yes, sir. 27, 28, 29.
So that would require a little less than a penny tax rate during each of the subsequent years, correct?
That's right. Um, we're assuming that a penny is generating about 570,000 dollars.
That amount come from another source that would-
Any source you would-
So we could take it from our fund balance?
Absolutely.
To pay it off and then there's no direct tax impact?
Correct.
And then no additional, no huge additional, um, money going to debt service? Or I think you call it, uh, it's a surplus over here that would build by 475,000. Oh, hold on. That's the wrong page. I just had it. Page 17 shows one. It would build by-
Yeah, page 17 is where we are?
So if you go one way, it's building an extra 431,000 in debt capacity. If you were to raise it and leave it, I would be of the mindset to use the fund balance to offset this one. And then whenever we sell that remaining property, that goes back to our fund balance for projects.
Wanted the public to be clear on what we face and the options that we have to deal with the extra requirement. So that if we didn't raise the tax, we have that option to secure the funds from another source. But, you know, if we did raise the taxes, it would just be for a couple of years, then we would drop back down, correct? I mean, if we didn't have the fund balance and we raised the taxes for two years, we would drop back down.
Right.
We wouldn't need that.
For just this project, you only need that additional revenue for two or three years. By the time you get to 2030, you're, you're not in need of, of those revenues that you had. Now, that assumes you're not doing anything else.
Right, right. Just want to make sure that we're clear on that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. De.
I just wanted to make a comment. Um, I think the fund balance is definitely a legitimate way for the board to look. But I, I also want to remind you that I've mentioned about, um, how far behind we are on pay-go. And right now, the way that we budget for our capital project is using our fund balance. So essentially taking a half a million or near a half million dollars out of fund balance means that it, we might not be able to do school buses or some other activity. I think it's still a situation where you look at it when it comes because we are ahead of schedule on this project. The way that nothing has to be paid yet and the board could be looking at that, um, next year even on how to make the payment. The other thing I wanted to mention is, um, from the 26 budget, because no commitment financially has to be made until we actually get into the borrowing, we'd be coming back for additional resolution for you all to consider. The one thing that we would want to keep in the 26 budget is the, the, the narrative that the board has committed to it as well as the contribution from the fire department. So there has to be, even if we don't have it in our 26 budget, we need to incorporate it because we would be looking for the revenue to come in and not necessarily July 1 or anything like that. But we would have to have it in order to make the, the system flow.
But the contribution from the fire department is less than what was originally submitted, correct, by?
It is.
Right, that's right. Okay.
Yeah, they had to, uh,
They had to do it.
Handle the pharmaceutical changes that were required.
So, so really what you're saying is an opportunity cost decision. Either you do this or you forego the other one, right? Take this or do that.
You have some options. That's why I said I thought you were going to really like this. This is pretty much what we've been discussing all along. It, it's better financially because we used 5% for one. So we built in a little bit of a buffer. And, and then you've got these, um, so we didn't really see the ability to pay off and, and look at the total amount versus the tax rate. So when we were talking about a penny, we were looking at, you know, that 84 cents kind of thing and if you had it at 5%. But you have options of, of how you could pay that debt.
So if you assume 5%, then you're going to have to readjust your budget then. The proposal for budget is a little lower.
It's not in the budget. That's what I'm saying. It's not in the 26 budget other than the revenue coming in from GVFR. Because we won't be paying anything in the 26 budget. But we do want them to know that there's the commitment and nobody's backing out. So we need to figure out a way to, maybe in the, the budget resolution somehow to say that the county is committed to moving this project or something. I mean, we've already, I know you've already done that once, but I mean, as part of the, the future budgets.
Any other questions? So, Mr. Cole? Thank you, Ms. Cole.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I have some differing, uh, views on our existing debt retirement. Can we get an up-to-date one? Because the one from last year, I'm showing different amounts than what showed in this year's budget presentation. So if I can get the solid one in order of the year, because the one from last year goes 26, 27, 30, 35, 33, 40, 30, 42, 43, the years that they final maturity. This is, I don't remember which, I think this was in a budget presentation from last year. If I can get an up-to-date one of those so that I could fully understand what our outlook is.
Yeah, one of the things I was going to mention, I went back and looked at several, I spent hours comparing all of the different debt retirement stuff that was in different presentations. And it, all of them jived from what I saw. So, but I can provide in a different format if you'd like. Because we've given it, I think, in two different presentations this year as well. One of the confusing pieces, specifically in the, the slide from the 25 proposed CIP, I believe is what this slide is from, is that the final maturity is listed out in the month, the day, and the year. So for instance, 2006 VPSA final maturity is July 15th of 2026. That is fiscal year 27. And then July 15th of 2027 is fiscal year 28. So that's where we're running into that. But I see what you're saying and I'm happy to provide an, another version.
Yeah, it just needs to be so, so we can fully understand because there's, I mean, we just talked about maybe using fund balance to offset the half a million dollars. We could also take our fund balance and, and, and apply it and go, okay, what is our next three retiring debts? Or the, the three easiest hanging fruits? Take that money from fund balance, tie it up to pay those off, and then we can immediately open up debt service capacity this year. And I can't figure that out because every time I get a debt retirement, it's some slightly different formulation for me. I don't do this every day, Ms. Callaway. So I don't see these numbers enough to go, okay, it makes sense. It doesn't make sense. But when I get it, you know, every two, three weeks or then every month or two months, it's just enough different that I can't quite formulate what you're, what you're telling me. But there's a way that we can do this and not have to raise taxes because we shouldn't be raising taxes to fund the fire department if there's a way to do it with cash. And I think we have seen the light that there's a way to do this with cash, at least offset until we get some more retirement.
Yeah, I talked to Ms. Callaway regarding those three pages in the budget books for 24 and 25. And the one we're looking at, 26, and they are slightly different. But didn't you tell me that that is also related to the fact of the way the payment schedule is set up? That sometimes the payments are different. I think that also plays a role in how the information was presented in the budget book, in our budget book. And that's, and I agree, they're, they're slightly different because depending on how you look at it as a FY25, which is, you know, now, and then 26 starts in, you know, whenever. So I, so I can see where Mr. Crisco is coming from in terms of, let's, for this particular budget. budget cycle, know exactly what we're dealing with in terms of when each of these different, uh, debt requi, uh, debt requirements are over with.
Yes.
And what, and the first day we have available to us, in terms of getting the additional money, once that debt's paid off.
And, yes, thank you for that. Um, one of the, so, some, uh, we actually did in the appendix of the proposed budget, the slides, seven, sixty-nine, seventy, and sixty-eight through seventy, uh, we modified the debt retirement chart that was in the CIP presentation, and put a new slide in that has, I tried to put a new column in that would say, so that it didn't just say first year for potential spending, it also had the last payment due date and the fiscal year that that falls in. And it's got a big yellow column in there. And then I also included the two debt charts from the last two budget books, but what Ms., what Dr. Orth is referencing is that, um, government debt is not linear, where our mortgages are generally fixed rates, or, so what I say debt retirement is, this year, it's gonna fluctuate sometimes by as much as a couple hundred thousand dollars, that, and it, but it's not actually the debt retiring, it's simply those payments dropping. So you don't see that debt wiped away. I certainly understand that you know that already, but, um, that chart in, on page seventy of the CA budget presentation, I can send that out, and that way, if there's a, additional questions, we can modify it, because we want it to be understandable and make sure that in the future, we can avoid that confusion.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely fine. I'm just, we, we just need to look at the way to use our cash reserves in the most beneficial way to the citizens of the county. With what our next public hearing, or what our public hearing is going to bring tonight, these folks could be facing a double-edged sword. So that's why I'm looking at trying to minimize any fiscal impact, as much fiscal impact as possible.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Calloway. Moving on, the next on our agenda is public comment period. And we ask that you just keep your comments, please, tonight, to three minutes or less. Nothing, nothing on the public hearing?
At this point, no.
Nothing, okay. Nothing on the public hearing at this point?
I didn't hear you.
Everything except was on the public hearing?
Public hearing, right. Very good. It's gonna be more of a thing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of board, Ms. Steel, Mr. Wilmot, Howard Mallory of New York. With a loss of six hundred and thirty-four students to homeschooling in this division, it is time to analyze the cost to the taxpayer and local funding support for an empty seat. This year's cost is around six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars per student, or a little over four million. To level the playing field for the taxpayer, since you are going to raise personal property taxes, a credit of approximately a hundred and three dollars is due on the coming billing cycle before the new tax is assessed. The time has arrived, where the taxpayer should not be taxed for empty chairs, and the credit annually is the cure for overtaxation. Reviewing the utilities budget and doing some research with friends, a fault in the structure of the department has been discovered over many years of secrecy. The county is responsible for the maintenance of the HRSD sewer system lines by contract or MOA. This being the case, move the sewer system responsibility to the Public Works Department, as in the city of Newport News. Personnel will also be moved. The water utility, being an enterprise fund, will then be able to function better. Additionally, since it has been neglected for decades by the administration and the sitting board over time, now is the time to fix the problem, since rates are increasing. The other major requirement is to place an advertisement for ten new employees who will begin long-term overdue maintenance of replacing non-standard lines and bringing the system up to current standards for the safety of the users. We do not want to be another Richmond or Detroit news item. Visiting Bigford Dam Park, I noticed one parking space for people with disabilities, but no parking for a side-exiting vehicle. So I accepted two spaces. The new pier looks great. Yet, it was interesting, and the presentation, it covers ten reassessment cycles, plus maybe some growth, and many tax increases. Also, what's not mentioned is you have a possible sixty to a hundred million dollar debt to fix the utility department, and none of that has been brought to bear. We recommend you reduce the current budget proposal by ten percent. And do we really need a Doge? I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Anyone else?
Diane Jones from the Ware District. I really don't like being here, but I have to show up, because the Lord's called me to do it. We're gonna discuss it when I get to heaven. And, um, I'm sorry to see you go, Mr. Pizzani. I wish there was an objection, but there isn't. I had to correct your answer to the student, or to the young Republican gentleman that came up and asked you about the AI system, because you did, you were a bit of a gaslighter to him. And you told us here that the AI system gave you the power to discern not only who, whether male or female, was going to Walmart, but also whether, whatever the racial component of the person or the color of their skin was at Walmart. So that's a little more invasive. You don't get those from zip codes. So, please, just be transparent. I mean, why, why do we have to keep under, digging under things? They finally paved Warehouse Road, and because I was up at the crack of dawn, I was able to get to the supervisor of the project, notified him about the little, the place on Edge Hill Street where it dipped down and people were falling into the ditch all the time, including school buses. And he absolutely fixed it. I'm very, very grateful. I don't know what, you have any influence over the electric company, but these little things like funding windmills, when they've already decided that they weren't gonna have windmills in Virginia, and yet they have all these, you have to pay for this, you have to pay for that, you have to pay for the other thing. It, it's not, I don't know what influence you have over it, I just, that's a concern of every citizen to whom I speak. Even in Matthews, they're having the same problems. If you can't, if you can't balance a budget, um, you need to do something else, because when I have a debt, if I have a debt, say I had to have something with a credit card that wasn't in my budget and just happened, major car expense or whatever. If I have to borrow money for that, I don't go out and buy stuff until that's paid off. So it might be a good idea for you to figure that out. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Jones. Is there anyone else? Yes, Ms. Whitney, do you have any, read a column?
This is from Kenny Hoag Senior from Gloucester Point. Section C of Title 12 VAC 5-590-1000 of the Virginia Administrative Code states in part, "All pipes, tanks, and equipment that convey, store, or treat potable water shall be disinfected with chlorine before being placed in service in accordance with the following AWWA standards where applicable. This is just one example of the many requirements to disinfect components of potable water systems before they are placed in service, and includes potable water, plumbing, and buildings, private and public wells, and water systems, et cetera." The title also states in part, "The objective of disinfection is to prevent the occurrence of waterborne diseases from the consumption of drinking water. Utilities self-performed a water line replacement on Colony Circle at Gloucester Point. The new components that were attached to the existing eight-inch water line on Yorkview Drive, and the new two-inch water line and five residential service lines were not chlorinated or sanitized before they were connected to the existing eight-inch water line and to the five residential meters before releasing water into the residences for human consumption. The new lines were also not properly flushed or purged of all dirt and other debris that may have been in the lines. The new lines were not pressure-tested at three times the normal operating pressure for the appropriate amount of time. There are other issues with this project, most of which I have provided in the board via email. The project was started on February twenty-eighth, and as of this time of this meeting, the project is still not complete. Whether the board and the county administrator realize it or not, the demonstration of incompetence is very serious, and responsibility circles right back to, to the aid of you. I hope the analysis of the county's borrowing capacity included in the infrastructure liabilities associated with utilities assets and the continued degradation of those assets. If not, then the analysis is likely flawed. Parks, recreation, tourism, community engagement, the Daffodil Festival, artificial intelligence, pay raises for the administrator, and upper-level employees, personal empire building, funding Main Street, and non-governmental organizations, endless software and website changes, et cetera, are all more important to this board and administrator than having safe and reliable drinking water and sewage disposal. Drinking water and sewage disposal are health and safety infrastructure items that are far more important than all of your wants and desires. It is time to step into the real world and start running their country like professionals, instead of kids running a lemonade stand." Next comment is from Robert Thompson, nine-six-six-one, Spring Branch Drive. "In a residential neighborhood such as Burke's Mill, where houses were constructed only seventy-five to a hundred and fifty feet apart, why is there no ordinance to prevent shooting firearms? My exasperation and frustration are not with my neighbors owning firearms, but with the noise level that nearby shooters generate. It significantly reduces my quality of life because of the loud and frequent shots fired, thereby creating a nuisance. Sadly, laws and ordinances are necessary, because members of the society often fail to consider the needs and interests of others. I respectfully request that Gloucester County ban shooting within a mile of another dwelling. Besides the noise factor, public safety can provide further justification for my request. If you have received too much opposition from huntsmen, please consider enacting such an ordinance for weekends and holidays. Thank you."
Thank you, Whitney. Okay. No more public comments. At this time, we're gonna move on to our public hearing. Public hearing to consider an ordinance revising certain utility fees, rates, and charges imposed by Chapter Nine waters, sewers, and sewage. And Ms. Maria Calloway is going to be doing that. And we also would like to extend our condolences to Ms. Legg, who lost her father, and, uh, we, certainly our prayers will be with her. So at this time, thank you so much for filling in tonight.
You're welcome. Yes, good evening, and I have some big shoes to try to fill for the evening, because Ms. Legg has set the bar very high as far as the dissemination of this information with great clarity. So I will do my very best. She has prepared this information, so I'm just gonna explain it as best as I can. We also have, of course, Mr. Baines, who's available if there are any project-specific questions that may arise. So just a quick overview of tonight's public hearing. It is to revise the utilities rates that are incorporated into Chapter Nineteen of the county code. This information has been presented multiple times, so this is going to be very quick. The intent of these, uh, rate changes is to address all of the operational costs, as well as the capital plan that's been presented, uh, to, to the board in various meetings. Of course, there's the Raftellus report in 2012, that we, you'll see a little demonstration in a chart later on in this, uh, in these slides, where Raftellus in 2012 had said, "We should be increasing the rates by three percent each year." And that was not adopted. The last rate increase we had was in 2014. So I'll show you that, that, that graphical representation in a, a few slides. So ultimately, staff, Ms. Legg, has, they, we've all gone through countless spreadsheets, working through these various models, various scenarios, and obviously worked with our financial advisors at Davenport, to make sure that we are considering all revenue options, leveraging borrowing as needed, and making sure that we're effectively meeting the needs, operational and capital, of the utility system. So these proposed rate increases are the first step in implementing that ten-year plan. These are the proposed rate increases of five-year outlook. The rate increase that is for consideration tonight in the public hearing is fourteen percent per tier, which would go into effect May first of 2025. The list of these total increases over five years would provide the funding to make sure that the fund can provide for the capital and operational costs over the next five years. I've also wanted to mention that the importance of this, uh, this change going into effect as soon as possible, really has been explained in multiple presentations, but we have shown over time where the capital needs and operational costs have outpaced the revenues of the utility system. And this year, we, as we've told you before, we're anticipating that the reserve fund will be pretty much depleted by the end of fiscal year '25. So I think that was the, the goal behind pulling that date up to May first of 2025. So these are the current water rates. I won't read each of those, but the next slide shows the proposed. So under this proposed rate increase, the tier one will go to twenty-three oh one, an increase of two dollars and eighty-three cents. And then tier two will be eleven forty per thousand for the next six thousand gallons, and that's an increase of a dollar forty. Tier three, eleven dollars and eighty-six cents per thousand, over eight thousand gallons. This is the monthly impact for a water-only customer. So in that red box, you can see that eighty-six percent of our customers will see an increase of seven dollars and three cents, all the way down to two eighty-three. So ninety-five percent of our customers will see an increase of eleven twenty-three or less per month. These are the current sewer rates. And again, on the next slide is the proposal for the increase. Up to two thousand gallons would be an increase of one dollar fifty-six cents. And then tier two would go to sixty-nine cents, and, an increase of sixty-nine cents, and tier three, an increase of sixty-six cents. And then the summation of that, which is the combined impact of water and sewer rates, ninety percent of our customers would see an increase per month of sixteen seventy-nine or less, with eighty percent of those customers being at ten dollars sixty-two cents per month or less. This is a demonstration of the Raftellus rates that I mentioned. So in the red line is the original Raftellus recommendation of three percent per year. So starting in year four, in FY fourteen was our last rate increase, and you can see where we would have been if we continued that three percent annually. And that green line is where we are today with the proposed increase, showing that there's still a bit of a gap there between where we would have had our rates increasing three percent per year versus the proposed increase tonight. And then the yellow and the blue lines are a water-only customer. So as you can see in both scenarios, the, the red and the yellow lines are both still higher than where we are proposing to increase this evening. This is just a snapshot of the amendment to the ordinance for sewer. And these, this incorporates the rates I just mentioned. And then the, uh, proposed amendment to the ordinance for water rates. And in conclusion, this public hearing is to consider amending that Chapter Nineteen of the county code, uh, which would revise the utilities rates. If this is- If this is adopted, staff would implement the increases on the May 1st billing. There is a resolution beginning on page 17 of your board packet, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Not yet. Not yet. Public comment? At this time. Any public comments?
Nathan Brown from the Ware District. Everybody knows you're going to have to increase the water sewer rates, but the problem is a percentage increase is definitely not the way to do it. She just said 90% of your customers use less than 8,000 gallons. So you've got to concentrate your increases in the smaller users because you've got all mainly just residential customers. If you want to raise money to pay back debt and make improved system, you've got to charge these people more. Your basic rate for somebody using 2,000 gallons is going from $11.17 to $12.73 on a sewer. I looked at other localities, like, for example, York County, their sewer rates for residential customers are flat rate. It's $54 for every buy monthly. So they're charging people $27 a month. We should be doing the same thing. It doesn't make any difference to the sewer system, really, how much water you use. Everybody, you still have to have the crews to maintain the system, you have to have the pump stations, you have to have all these things in place, whether any water goes in the sewer or not. The only variable cost, really, is some additional repairs and the cost of electricity. So you need to start spreading the load out so everybody pays into the system. I mean, where do you get, the minimum is $12.73. You go get a cellphone, the minimum you get a cellphone is like $25, $35 a month for with a data plan. How come we're charging so little? I mean, Verizon charges for a home phone, and they charge forty-some dollars when you add tax on to it. But, you know, it's not going to work. We need to revise the rate so that everybody's paying in more because it's just not going to work out in long term. I can't, how much do we need the sewer rates to be? I can't tell you because I don't know how much the sewer system costs to operate. We don't break, we haven't never broken out this cost, what the operational cost and the debt service, et cetera, of the sewer system is. So I don't, I don't know what it is. We need to find all these things out so we know, well, we got to make the sewer system self-supporting. Right now, I don't think it does. Not when you're going to spend, what, $5 million rebuilding two pump stations and the sewer lines into them. That's not going to work. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Yes, sir? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, members of the boards, you need to look at the Buchanan County and the process in ordinance that they put in place. If you remember, I did a count, and you had 6,500 possible users in the county for water, but at the same time, with the numbers you had, you don't even come close for collecting. The other thing I brought up at the last meeting or two was you, as a board, need to look at the ability to have a water authority. And you, as a board, are the overseers of the authority and put the funds on it to make it work. Everybody in the county now should have to pay somehow or another into the water authority. Those few that are on the line can never make it work. All you have there is a Band-Aid on a little cut on my finger. You're broke, and you have to come up with another way to fix it. And your lines are in terrible shape in various sections of the county, and you know it. And if you don't know it, you need to check it out and have surveys done to be able to tell you where the lead lines are at, the galvanized lines, and so forth, and maybe even concrete asbestos lines that are ancient and need to be replaced with current standard water lines. This is a huge expense, and nobody's paying any attention. And then you have the debt, and you have not considered the debt that it's going to take to fix all this, and that is an increase across the board also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Board members? Oops, oops, sorry.
Brought the wrong glasses. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Teresa Altimus from the Gloucester Point District. Mr. Brown and Mr. Maury really addressed a few things, so I'm going to try to really cut my comments short. One thing that I found very surprising the other night, and I think Mr. Baines, I'm looking at him, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that what he said was the debt service was paid off in 2019. The six years of really not addressing the issue. I do agree. I see the rates of 14%, 13% next year, 11%, 10%, and so forth. It's over 56% if you look at it with the blind eye right now. But what I don't see is the plan for the next few years. You talk about a 10-year plan now, but you really haven't addressed the water system in the past 10 years. That's just not, that's not good leadership. It's not good place to be. And if you don't do it, every citizen in this county will continue to pay for the water system, whether he or she is currently hooked up. And I would encourage you to give more detail in what you're doing because, to me, what is proposed, and I've read through the board packet, but there's a lot of unanswered questions, and that probably would take far more time than I have right now to ask those questions. But I would have you, respectfully ask you to reconsider and give more information than what you presented in the board packet to vote on tonight. Thank you.
The final result was next.
Diane Jones from the Ware District. I want to say something positive. Thank you, Mr. Nikosa, for calling the water company when I told you about the leak. Within two days, they were out and fixed the leak. They haven't done the landscaping yet, but I'm assuming they will shortly because I'll be calling them every day until they do. I guess people that don't use city water, paying for city water, I don't know. If you have to hook them up, then they do. I know that they've been paying a fee, like $1,500 or so, depending on how long a line they need to take. And I'm wondering if our little copper lines are going to be replaced with the white things. That's a question I have. Is that going to be my expense or your expense?
Okay. Yes, Whitney?
It's from Kenny Hoag Senior from Gloucester Point. "Over the last 12 years, I have tried to get the Gloucester Board of Supervisors to acknowledge and rapidly and effectively react to the fact that our utilities department assets are in very poor condition. Director Schlesinger, Director Dawson, and now Director Legg have attempted to do the same and have not received any support from the board. It appears this board either just does not care if the county has reliable and safe water and sewer systems, or you are all just too incompetent to realize the severity of the overall situation and associated liabilities. There's no magic wand that is going to mystically make reality change or disappear. It is going to take competent leadership, strategic planning, and a lot of financial support to dig out of the hole that every supervisor and administrator over the last 15 or 20 years has had a hand in creating. When will you realize our public water and sewer systems affect every Gloucester citizen's life, whether they are connected to the systems or not? Schools, restaurants, businesses, the hospital, fire departments, and more depend on our public water and sewer systems. Therefore, everyone in the county has a stake in utility success or failure. Yet this board and administrator do not intend to invest any money in utilities in FY26. Parks, recreation, tourism, and community engagement, artificial intelligence, and outlandish annual pay raises for our administrator and other high-level employees seem to be more important to all of you. One of numerous examples of your uncaring or incompetence is this board and county administrator proposing to give Parks, Recreation, and Tourism $1,688,076 from the FY26 local tax base. Combined, these departments only make $371,146 from charges for services, et cetera, with the rest of their over $2 million budget being paid for by nothing but local taxes. Utilities get zero. This is not new. You've been doing it for years. How can the aid of you throw so much money at nonessential social endeavors while the county's infrastructure continues to crumble? Here is a suggestion: Cut expenditures from your proposed budget so that all meals' tax revenue is appropriated to utilities until such time as a department becomes stable. You cannot place all of utilities' financial burden slowly on the handful of utilities' customers. I support the rate increase proposal for FY26, but I realize this is not even a drop in the bucket compared to what it actually is needed by the utilities. It would be who viewed to realize that also. Remember, elections have consequences, and this is an election year."
Okay, thank you, Whitney. Public, oh, we closed, I'm sorry. Public hearing is closed. That concludes our public hearing. Okay, more discussion. Board members. Mr. Hudson?
I have a couple of questions. And unfortunately, Ms. Legg's not here, but it's quite understandable why she's not here. Let's start with the graph for the Raftellus report. Correct me if I'm wrong, staff, Mr. Baines, Ms. Steele, but if we would have done the increase, yes, it would be higher than it is right now, but we would have had money in the reserve fund and/or been able to repair some of the items that greatly need repairing.
Correct.
If you look between the red line and the green line, the gap between that would have been revenue we would have had to be able to do this work. So yes, those graphs, so we would have had more funds to do the work if we'd stayed with the original.
And it's nice that it stopped right here because this is the proposed for this year increase. Is there a graph that goes out for the next five years?
We, do you want me, we can prepare it for you, but we don't have, we didn't, this was prepared today.
I understand, but is there a way that I think it would far exceed the Raftellus?
Oh, it would.
It would exceed it.
Well, you're fine. She's smarter with the money than I am, but I will tell you that in the two retreat we had in the work session, Ms. Legg did bring some information forward, and she showed us basically what it would cost us in the next 10 years to get the work done, and we broke it down for the first five. For the 10 years, it was $66 million; for the first five, it was $30 million. In that, she showed what the rates would have to be to get that $30 million on top of our operating costs. This increase we're asking for tonight is just to cover our operating costs for next year. It's not to start building that balance we need to do the repairs.
Correct.
She showed you three options. One was a cash option, that I think we had to start the rates at 50% or 60% above what they are today, and worked our way back down so we would have cash to do it. Showed us an option two, that we wanted to put enough money away to have 50% of our operating budget, and an option three, that put away 25% of our operating budget for these emergencies and repairs. Y'all decided on the 14% was based on that option three. So option three was to allow us to have enough money in the next five years to pay, to borrow money, I think in '27, to do that $30 million worth of work in the next five years. So it is a start, but we don't have where it's going, but it's going to have to increase enough, and that's with the basic 8% increase from our AMI in a growth rate of 10%.
The, what, the point I'm trying to make is, although there's a big increase this year, that's considerably lower than Raftellus.
Yes, sir.
In the five-year point, it would be considerably higher than where it would have been if we would have gone to 3%. We didn't go to 3%, so that's not there. Of the five-year plan, what part of that was sewer?
There are several things in it in the five-year plan.
But it was 20, how many million?
I think there was, not quite that much, but there was a lot. So in the sewer cost upfront, there was pump station increases of $7 million, a forced main extension of $2.5 million, pump stations for the generators of $2 million, so two, four and a half, five, six, yeah, so 11. But that's in, and that's in the first five years.
But then if we go out to 10 years?
There'd be a lot more, but that's all I've got with me tonight. Well, I do have the 10-year also.
But, well, let's just stay there. So the issue that some of my fellow board members are concerned about is that the bulk, that the citizens of the county, if they're not on utilities, shouldn't have to pay for the utilities. Well, I think that it's, the whole county uses the utilities, one form or another, and I think it's on the county that we should have, that everyone should pay utilities, a fee, a tax for them. Well, I understand you don't agree, but I'm stating the fact that it is. But right now, what we're trying to do is 3,292 people are going to have to pay in the next five years $11.2 million for something that they're not utilizing. But the rest of the citizens aren't supposed to pay anything to what's being utilized by the whole county, for the schools, the fire department, the stores, and everything else that's in this county. Everyone benefits from utilities, water, and sewer. But with the proposal that we're showing, you've got the minority of 1946 are on water and sewer. Yet the 3,292 that are only on water are going to have to pay a large percentage of their fees to cover the sewer.
We understand that right now, it's a combined system, and you're right. We're looking right now to start raising revenue so we can repair it, but the...
But the revenue is only going to be increased, as you both said earlier, to cover operating.
This year, yes, sir.
And then, right now, I believe our, the fund balance is going to roughly be $25,000?
It's going to be low, yeah, between, yes.
Between 25 and 27?
And 50, yeah.
So it's not 29, it was 27. I'm giving a bit...
It was initially 27. Those, each month, the target moves, but yes, it's going to be, I believe, under $50,000.
Okay. Well, let's go 50. Let's be optimistic. How much did the, that last, the emergency that we're looking at doing at Mark Pine?
$30,000. That's if we do the work ourselves, 60 if we have to have a construction.
So then we're down to 20, give or take. So we've got to...
No, I think she's...
But my point is that with the money that we have, we don't have excess funds for any emergency. So we've got to build that up. And by raising the rates, which need to be raised, and I'm in favor of raising the rates, but we've also got to have an increase with all the citizens in the county paying it, or we're going to be stuck in forever. We're not going to get out of this bond.
So that references what, I guess Ms. Altimus was mentioning, and what we had done before is where the board had put money into the utilities department as a funding source. And again, I can't remember it all because I'm old and I wasn't here for the whole time, but at first was to pay off the interest on loans we had had for the reservoir and for the sewer system. But I don't know how it, towards the end, what the number was, but I know in 2019 was the last payment of about $190,000, and then they were supposed... and then they were supposed to be on their own, and every year after that, you've watched us spend our savings account down because we haven't made enough money to cover our expenses.
So, Mr. Baines, so it's been that way ever since the beginning, where just the citizens that are using water and sewer, has it ever been a time where everyone paid for it?
I think that's what Mr. Baines is referencing.
And that happened until twenty-nineteen?
That, there was a period, I believe, between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and nineteen where the utilities fund was supplementing, I mean, the general fund was supplementing the utilities fund.
Okay.
Until certain debt was paid off.
Okay.
So, the earliest we'd be able to get any financing for any of these projects would be twenty-twenty-seven.
That's what she has right now for the model, is that we would borrow money in twenty-six?
No, we would go out right away. Actually, there is an interest payment included in our twenty-twenty-six budget because the anticipation is that we would borrow as soon as possible in.
What amount?
Uh, the borrowing is two million dollars in fiscal year twenty-six. It's the first year of the plan.
Out of thirty million required.
It's based on a realistic out, uh, outlook of what can actually be done. I think that is, yeah, two million ninety-five thousand dollars, so.
We were talking about debt retirement. There's five years left on the existing debt, so that was built in also, that borrow now, start fixing things, start trying to do the reserve, and it works in using that debt payment, too. So, it's, it's, I mean, I think we could all argue there's more that could be added to it, absolutely. It could be justified, but I just wanna make sure it's very clear. We are starting with capital projects immediately.
And I think they also staggered the borrowings because.
Yes.
We don't have the manpower if we were to get all the money to do all the projects in a year, anyway.
And if I may, on fund balance, we, for several years, just budget-wise, I could see where capital projects were consistently being budgeted and they weren't able to be completed, and that made it look like we had fund balance that we budgeted over multiple years, and so, um, the new director has made projects go very quickly. There've also been things that have broken that needed to be fixed, and that is why we would have seen this fund balance issue several years ago if projects were moving more quickly.
Yes, that, that's totally right. Uh, the million or two million that were there for capital would use, some of them would be used for operations or whatever, and it would just get passed on to the next year, and we try to do the same project the next year.
Yes, Mr. Gibson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to clarify, so if this rate increase passed, that would address thirty million dollars in needs over the next five years?
No, this is, starts it. You have to have an increase each year that was in one of those slides.
Okay.
To make that thirty million. This is fourteen this year, next year it's thirteen, the year after that it's eleven, the year after that it's ten, then eight, 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 and eight, and that would give us with those rate increases, the funds we need to, to fund that, uh, with, yeah, loans.
With a caveat that growth could change this, that if cer, so, these are based on very conservative levels of growth because of the situation we're in currently.
But there is sixty-six million dollars of identified needs for this system. Is that the number that I heard?
Over ten years.
Over ten years. Thank you.
And, and as Ms. Callaway said, this is our first, our best guess right now. Each year, we'd come back to you, and if we've got more people connecting up, so you have more money that's going into the, uh, the, the reserve fund, we could adjust things. But we have to look at what we have right now, and the last year was a very slow year. They had, they had anticipated about a million dollars in connection fees. We're only in the tens or twenties of thousands. It did not materialize, so we can't just hope for connections. We gotta wait till we see them, then we can start adjusting after that. But right now, this is with what we have today, these are the numbers we need to meet those goals. Right. We, we, well, we know right now that chemicals with everything going on, we don't get quotes for thirty days. They give us quotes that say it's good until the next tariff increase.
Or repairs, or lots of.
But also understand that anticipated expenses were added into the forecast, including additional employees, so it wasn't.
Right.
It's all, it could, anything could happen, but I just wanted you to know that it did include what we think is gonna happen and needing of additional staff as growth occurs.
Yep.
And inflationary costs for chemicals, et cetera.
But that is hoping that we can get everything repaired on our schedule. What Mr. Lamont said is if something's not on our schedule, we may have to come back and have to borrow money sooner.
And the bids could be much higher.
Yeah.
We don't know.
We don't know.
Mr. Nikosia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Baines, I know, Ms. Callaway, either one of you can answer this. I just trying to get it all in my mind. All right, you raised your rates this year. That is just to cover operation, the operational budget.
That's correct, sir.
Correct? So, that does not anticipate, or that does not take into consideration any catastrophic event that might take place.
Right, no, you go ahead.
Correct. The, it, in the event of a major catastrophe, that would have to be covered with general fund dollars likely, until we do have the development fund. Thank you, Ms. Steele. So, currently, we do have one point three million dollars remaining in development fund, so that would be another option, but the board would have to approve that, uh, purpose, for that purpose, but, uh, those would be the two options for catastrophes. And, and in year two of this five-year plan, which we're not looking at quite yet, but we've looked at it in detail, that is when we actually start generating a reserve, the, and building that reserve back.
And, and, Mr. Nikosia, one other thing is, as she stated, we're gonna borrow money, so we do have some interest, so we're gonna start trying to fix things right away, but that has to wait till y'all approve the budget. Tonight's just trying to get the rate increase. During your budget process, if you approve the budget, we'll be borrowing money right away to start fixing things to try to get ahead of things that are breaking.
So, if my memory serves, and correct me if, if I'm wrong, but Ms. Legg's predecessor, until that person retired, all of these problems showed up. Did we know about any of this before, before he left?
So, uh.
I think we did not.
Well, it wasn't obvious that this was, things were breaking the way they are now, but the previous director, he was a one-man show because he was both the engineer, he didn't have an assistant director, he was also the site plan approver, so he did that. He also did the policies, plus he did everything else that went on. When Ms. Legg's come in, y'all have asked her before, you know, she's not an engineer, she uses the engineers to do the engineering work. She does a lot of work with the budget department. So, your new director is looking at it at a much finer detail.
I agree. And, and. But, but what we don't have is the, the historical issues that were not surfaced for us to see.
That's correct.
That we've got a huge problem here.
But it has been a couple of years, because when Mr. Hedricks was on the board, we'd started to make y'all aware of him, because he walked down to the utilities yard. So, it's been a couple of years now we've been letting y'all know. So, even when Mr. Dawson was still here, we were coming to y'all and talking about some of the issues we were having. So, it's probably been since twenty-one, twenty-two, we've started to make y'all aware that, hey, there's things going on with pump station eleven, pump station thirteen, some of the issues we've had, but it's been short-term.
Again, we didn't, thank you for that, but we didn't know about the RO plan, or we didn't know there was a crack in one of the tanks at the water treatment facility. We didn't know that.
He did, he showed that on the Capitol Improvement Tour. He was the one who showed us that.
And, and.
When?
When you all took the Capitol Improvement Tour of the water treatment plant.
But that's a tour. Did he, did he mention it to the board of supervisors here?
He did, it was in the CIP, yes.
So, uh, Ms. Razani?
That's hidden in some, that's hidden in some piece of paper.
Well, some of it was, there's a two thousand and nineteen study that was done that talked about all these improvements we need to do, not that things were breaking, but the improvements. The problem was, again, he started to fund it. That's why you saw those fifty pages of CIPs, and you had to try to figure out which ones were each year. Y'all started to fund those, but we never got around to doing them. Y'all were asking about two-inch galvanized pipe. We have many of those. Clements Avenue is one for this next year. It's a two-inch pipe, needs to be replaced with a four-to-eight-inch pipe. We know where they are because there's a study from two thousand and nineteen. So, we do have a roadmap. The things like a crack in the side of the filter, absolutely. We didn't know about that, and we had to inspect it. We've had guys crawl under it and all around it, and we think we can fix it without having to take the system offline. At first, we thought we were gonna have to take it down for a couple of days, but we've had other issues. You, you all knew about a water line break the other night that kept us up all night, so, I mean, those things aren't planned, but we are out here trying to make sure we're doing better than we have in the past with making y'all aware and being clear. But I will admit that you probably weren't aware of all the things that were going on. They were more in, in-house than they were up here, but we're doing a pretty good job of bringing them to you now.
Well, yeah, we're bringing it into light now that we're trying to, trying to get a fix here in five to ten years, right?
Yes, sir.
I, I think the biggest.
And it's not Ms. Legg's fault.
No. But, but we are, but we do have a plan that we think a five-to-ten-year plan is reasonable. You know, it, it's not two years, and it's certainly in twenty years. We're trying to make it something we think's reasonable to, to be able to both help the citizens and the board in making decisions.
And my last point is, I don't agree that, that people who are on wells should have to pay for utility system.
Right.
Raise the rates. Do, do what you have to do, but not, not for folks who are on well water.
They did for thirty years.
Well, then you had, then you hid the salami in the budget, then. You never, never had a line item for saying, hey, extra for utility, utility cost.
No, it was, we transferred funds.
It was transferred funds.
The first six years I was on this board.
I know, I know, Mr., I know, but you weren't, you didn't identify it as a significant, a line item in the utilities budget. We have a, a certain amount of funds to repair a broken system.
No, but we did.
Nobody knew that.
But we did have a line in the budget that said we were transferring it from our general fund to the utilities.
Yes.
Which was under the impression that everybody else in this county think, well, this is just operational issues, not, not capital structure issues.
But, but we still transferred the money.
Well, they didn't identify, it wasn't identified to us.
It's two different things. That money was being transferred to pay debt for the reservoir that allowed us to get these stores, like Walmart, like the Costco you've always wanted. The, that store came here because we had a water system. And the citizens of Gloucester were transf, the citizens of Gloucester's taxes were being used to pay down that debt so that we could get the reservoir, the last reservoir built in the Commonwealth of Virginia, by the way. So, it's been there in, in place in the past. This is the correct first step. I hate it because it's, it's a larger increase than I would like to see, and guess what? We get to do this all again next year.
Yes. Oh, I'm, I'm not an objection of the, the rate increase. You're just frustrated, and, and we are frustrated also. We're frustrated also.
It's the frustration in my.
This also isn't the first time that we've heard, and the first time that we've, we've all been frustrated with this, because we've been talking about this now for a good, uh, almost four months, or more.
Yeah.
Uh, just with this portion of the, the rate increases.
Yes, Mr. Hudson?
I know y'all are standing there, but I wanna ask the resident expert on this one.
Howard?
Mr. Nikosia.
Oh.
Um, I know we're gonna, the whole county's gonna end up paying for the fire station that services the north end of the county. Okay. But do y'all have a well at the fire station?
Nah, that I'm aware of.
Where's it come from?
Ms. Legg's, uh, five people that are, water plant, make sure.
We got what we need.
Okay. So, in the event somebody that's on well water has a fire, we're using water produced by the county, by the utilities department, to put out a fire?
As far as I know, if it's coming out of the hydrant, it was, it was, uh, produced by the county.
So, the people that aren't on water get to benefit from the water? In the event their house catches on fire?
In the event that their house is on fire, yes, sir.
Okay. So, but I thought they didn't benefit from it. Okay, what about the people in Wareneck, or in Guinea, or in other parts of the county that don't have water? Their kids have water running, uh, public water and sewer at the schools. That's not an exception.
I'm not arguing. I'm just saying that, my point was that this all surfaced just last year to us, and even during our, our retreat back in January. So, I'm just saying that this is a good step towards fixing it. Uh, I don't necessarily know that it would be fair for people who are on well water to help fix this as well.
And if we want fair, I don't know how, somebody that's only on water should have to pay for sewer repairs, if we want fair.
Yeah, Mr. Gibson?
Yeah, I, I don't have any questions. I just have comments if that's, if it's the appropriate time.
Yes, sir.
I, as, as difficult as this is for the consumer, um, I think it is a necessary step, and I support it. Um, I don't wanna be alarmist. I don't wanna call this a crisis necessarily, but we often talk about wants versus needs, and if there is ever a need, it is water. It is clean water, steady water, uh, and apart from public safety, we've taken on the duty as a county to provide water to those citizens who are able to access it, and we are failing in our duty if we do not repair this system and improve this system and provide, uh, the necessary funds to upgrade it. Uh, we've got broken pipes, broken lines, outdated equipment. We've got recurring repairs that are generating tens of thousands, sometimes hundreds of thousands of dollars in repairs, uh, crews working overnight to repair these outdated lines that are just compounding our costs and sinking our money. Then, on top of that, our reserve fund is almost depleted to twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, which is very concerning, uh, and the system needs addressing. And unfortunately, it hasn't been addressed, the funding hasn't been addressed in eleven years, since two thousand and fourteen, eleven years, and we have sixty-six million dollars in identified needs. That's massive. That's a massive need for our county to get this right. And so, I, I thought about today, well, what's the consequence, consequences of doing nothing? What if we reject this? Well, there's gonna be continued system failures of our outdated system. We're gonna continue to have pipe breakages costing hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. We are, and this is the biggest thing, we are risking a catastrophic failure of our system, and I know that we're not Los Angeles, and we are cer, we're not Richmond, far greater cities, but I, I wanted to dig into what was the real consequence of their water problems. And so, according to the L.A. Times, uh, they had two, the current estimate is two hundred and fifty billion dollars in economic losses, and because there was no water in the fire hydrants, because they had not planned adequately, and there was dry reservoirs, and because there were infrastructure problems that couldn't handle the needs, over fifteen thousand homes and businesses burned to the ground. Twenty-eight people died. We can't have that here in our county. We, we, we would be neglecting the needs of our county if we let something like that happen here. Then I looked at the Richmond Times-Dispatch about the water crisis that happened in early January. So, there was a power outage, but then there were also infrastructure failures in Richmond. Uh, this was prompted by a winter storm, and so from January sixth to January eleventh, there were, uh, there was some, many counties did not have any water, Richmond, Henrico, Hanover, Goochlin, uh, schools had to close, businesses had to close, the General Assembly had to delay the start of their session, the operation of the, uh, Hospital of ECU Health System was threatened due to the lack of water. You know, we have a few people speaking here tonight, but if we had a catastrophic failure and we didn't have water for a week here in Gloucester County, uh, this whole room would be filled, and, um, we, to me, we would be negligent in not addressing the needs of this system. So, um, I, I do just have to support this, um, and, and I do wanna address Mr. Hudson's point about the, the fairness of only those on water and sewer paying for this. And yes, ideally, uh, the entire county should pay for this, uh, because the entire county uses the water system, when they go to Walmart, when the children go to school, when the fire department uses the water. Everybody uses it. I would also note that those who are on well water, which is frankly the majority of the county, there are maintenance costs for well water. There's salt, there's filters, there's, there's things, there's maintenance of the system that those homeowners have to pay. So, they're paying for their, their systems as well. You had previously discussed maybe a one-cent tax that would be dedicated to the utility system, but my concern for that is that can be raided by the next board who wants to get their hands on that money. And we, to preserve the system, we need a dedicated revenue stream. And if there's a will on the board to make a transfer from the general fund to the utilities, then I think that's something we should consider. But I don't think a tax increase is the way to go about it. So given the $66 million in needs for this system, I support this resolution.
Okay, Mr. Crisco?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had Ms. Callaway put this chart back up because Mr. Hudson said something a few minutes ago that made me realize that I tend to agree that we're going to have to get back to, as a county as a whole, supporting this. The issue you see there with the green and the blue line is we have fallen behind our projections from Raff Tellis. This gets us headed the right direction with the ordinance change before us tonight. And I think we need to continue down this path until we get those lines, the blue and the orange and the green and the red to intersect, at which point in time we have to have the conversation, how is this, the entire county going to continue to fund this? You know, I don't like the huge increase, but these people have not seen an increase since 2014. So I think we have to take the prudent step tonight and then figure this out once we get back in line to where we should have been doing.
Dr. Or...
Okay.
I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said because everything that has been said is true, both by the citizens who have spoken here, who have provided comments via emails or telephone. We can't refute the fact that we have had and still continue to have major issues. But I want to at least say a couple of positive things about what's happened. Remember that while we're talking now, which is great, about what we need to do, we had provided utilities with significant funds to purchase equipment that makes the job of your utilities people a lot easier to work with. We've also moved utilities to at least a decent facility where men and women, when they come back from a job, can actually take a shower and clean up in decent facilities. We've moved forward with the purchase of an AMI system that hopefully will tell us a little more about water usage and also where the people who are on the system will be able to see their daily usage. We have been spending more time on utilities in the last four months than probably the previous 10 years. And I accept that responsibility that we messed up. But at least we're starting to look at it now and trying to deal with it. I know Mr. Maury said that we're putting a little Band-Aid on a small cut, but we're taking baby steps. I'm not going to make fun of this, but all this stuff is water over the dam. We can't change what's happened, but at least we are looking forward. And I think the board has to accept the responsibility that we don't want to have a major issue, as Mr. Gibson said, as they had in other localities. What we suffer here is being felt all over the country in terms of aging infrastructure. And as Mr. Maury's pointed out, and we know that a lot of our lines are galvanized, and that's why some people have complained about the color of the water. Some of these pipes are like what we've seen at the high school that are falling apart. They've got to be replaced. So yeah, we have to really deal with this. And I am hoping that this board will accept that responsibility and move forward with positive steps to help utilities in whatever way we can.
Mr. Bazani?
So just one last comment on these graphs. This is Raff Tellis reports. It's 11 years old. Does anybody believe that this red and yellow line is still accurate today? Oh, it looks like an academic 3% escalation cost. It was just a simplistic one.
That's all it was.
So I think it's much worse than that. I think those red and yellow lines are much worse than what they are.
That's what was recommended. You know, all we did was ask them to use what was recommended by the report. And that shows that had it been 3%, maybe it would have been, that's just as academic, yes. But maybe we would have, if we looked at it carefully, would have raised it higher, but we didn't.
If we'd have got the level of information annually from 2014 to what we're getting now in the last, how long has it been, Ms. Ducey?
Four months.
No, since Ms. Legg became...
About a year.
About a year? With the information that we've been receiving, we probably would have taken different steps.
Yep.
But I'm just using this because this is what we have. And it gives us a basic roadmap of where we got to get to. And at some point, the users have gotten a good deal. And I'm not saying that it was too good of a deal. However, we need to get into a position where they're back doing their share. And then as a county as a whole, the county as a whole has to do their share.
And Mr.... Mr. Gibson has suggested, if you're going to take some real estate tax money and include it in the general fund where it could be raided by a subsequent board, because only the three of us are going to come up for election here, we may be a different board altogether. It needs to be locked in where no one can touch it.
It happens every year. I mean, it's not going to change. I mean, it doesn't matter how you lock it up. We can come in the next year and change it. I can tell, tell them this deal. We're going to go to 14% fund balance this year. Spend it. Set it on fire. Throw it out the window. It doesn't matter. Each board can do this. All we can do is try to set it up for success. And that's all that we can do.
And Mr. Bazani, you know, you were talking about the 3%. This chart right here shows what Ms. Legg had calculated, that if we do it at 14, 13, 11, 10, and 8, it is higher in the beginning.
I see that.
No, but it'll try to get us caught up sooner than staying at the 3 we were at. But just like we said, we're going to come back to each year. Tonight, if y'all approve this, we'll have 14, but it doesn't mean next year we'll be 13. It may be 12 or it may be 15. It just depends on where we are in the funding. But we're trying to show you that there's a roadmap ahead. So as a board, you can kind of anticipate that we're not just out here, you know, throwing numbers at you. But that's what we're trying to do.
Mr. Crisco?
Mr. Baines, do we have, and I know she shared it with us, what each percent of the increase equates to in dollars? I know there's a number, she gave it to us at the February meeting.
You're a very...
Or January.
You've been a very sharp citizen who remembered. $36,000 is the approximate.
I couldn't remember. Too many numbers.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion to accept.
Just a second.
Okay.
Well, as I said, we need a taxing, we need an increase in our water and sewer. But I think that unless we make a caveat in it this year, that we take some money out of the general fund and add to this, it's an asinine decision on the board. So I'm going to vote no for.
We don't have the ability to do that this year as a board because, unless we take some straight cash, it won't be a continuing amount of money.
I didn't say it's a continuing amount, but we need the extra money there to take care of different things, more than just the $2 million.
Well, do you have a proposal of an amount from the fund balance?
I would say at least a penny out of the fund, no, out of general fund. Or I would say probably closer to $1 million, which would be a million, a penny and a half almost, penny and 1.4 cents, to add to it, to bring it whole so we can increase it. We've got to make that decision on behalf of the utilities for the whole, for the good of the whole county. Every district in this county, with the exception of Petsworth, has somebody on water and sewer. So, I mean, you're voting for your citizens and you're helping everybody in this county through stores, through schools, through everything else.
That's a decision for budget discussion.
Yes, but I can tell you right now, the decision's going to be made for this and nobody's going to look at utilities during budget season.
Well, I bet you will.
It's not going to matter. Just like now, it's one versus six. I mean, I'm looking at it from the point of view of what's best for the whole county.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a resolution on page 17.
I like the motion that we accept it.
Second.
Dr. Or.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
We thank you, Ms. Legg's behalf. So we really do appreciate it.
All right, moving on. Moving on to our regular agenda. Okay, comprehensive plan review. Ms. Ortiz?
How long is this going to be? Very short. Good evening.
This short?
Yeah. This actually should be one of your easiest decisions. If you call at the joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the Board, you all decided not to do the comprehensive plan totally, to just look at sections that needed to be updated. So we brought that to the Planning Commission at their March meeting. And they came up with a plan during that meeting to possibly have a steering committee to work with them meeting by meeting to identify issues. And then that would be presented to you at the August joint meeting. So I just really wanted to run it by you to see if you're okay with them doing that. It involves, they're talking about having one from each magisterial district. We probably have to move our meetings to TC Walker so that we could all, the group could talk amongst themselves. And also, like, when we, we actually just got two rezoning applications. So when we have big projects, we probably wouldn't be discussing it during those meetings. So really, before we move forward, I'd be working with community development. But the first question is, do we want the board to appoint those members or would you rather have the Planning Commission? And then also just to get support for the project.
Who selects the members?
That's what I'm asking. If you...
Who selects the...
They'd be from the volunteer board bank. So we would work with community engagement to encourage...
The regular volunteer bank.
Right. That's actually our thought. I mean, if you have a different thought.
No.
But we would work with them. It would take a little longer because we'd have to get volunteers. Then we thought one from each magisterial district. And because the board appoints the Planning Commission, we thought we'd see if that's how you wanted to work it for this. So that's really the question I have. And...
So again, she's, do you all want to go through the process of appointing citizens? Or would you like the Planning Commission to proceed? And we didn't really discuss this before, but the other, I don't know whether the other option of doing county administrators' committee, which would help on the FOIA and other kinds of things, it's sometimes scares some volunteers away.
But the FOIA really isn't an issue because we want this to be a public...
True, but I'm thinking about the individuals.
Yeah, right.
So it's up to the board. We know we need to get started. And the one concern that I said to Ms. Ducey Ortiz is that I didn't know that they would have enough ready by the August. I'm sure they'll have some things, but it's not like their committee could get appointed, get everything done, go through the whole plan and be ready to bring it to you in August, but they'd have some portion of it. And being transparent, there have been committees before when the Planning Commission did some things that maybe the board felt like they didn't have the authority to do. So this was, again, one of the reasons why they wanted to come and ask you all if you minded or would like to participate.
I think we, as the board members, should be looking at appointing these citizens once we get the requisite people into the board bank for us to talk to.
I agree.
I think we can just do that by consensus if that's the way the board feels. I'm sorry.
I do agree with that. Okay.
All right, thank you. Sorry, my head started choking all of a sudden, so I apologize. All right, well, then we'll move forward with that. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I thought you were going to go through it.
Regarding that...
Okay, moving on.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. So regarding that, I know, and I appreciate the Planning Commission working furiously to get stuff to us. But I know at the joint meeting, we talked about having a timeline, that we would be able to do this completely much more rapidly than earlier. So we don't get, we can get to it. Is that what we're expecting to see is a timeline that's really going to move forward much faster than the earlier one?
That is our goal. So what, actually, in our meeting on Thursday, we have a plan of what needs to be done and what to be looked at in the schedule. Again, sorry, that will depend on our workload. We're down a couple of people right now. So Sean McNash is actually kind of taking the lead right now while Carol Brizio's out. And then hopefully, when she comes back, well, she'll be able to totally focus on it. But so our goal is to go through it month by month. And hopefully in August, have something for you to look at.
Do you have a water over there with you?
I don't, but I'll be fine. I only have a few more.
Okay.
You only have a few more things. So, yeah, as soon as I walked up here, for some reason, I must have, I apologize.
You're turning red like Ted.
Okay, moving on. Regular agenda, consideration of ordinance amending several sections of Chapter 9 of the county code, garbage and refuse. Mr. Wilmore?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The materials associated with this matter commence on page 27 of your agenda packet. You have tonight before you consideration of an ordinance, which is on page 28, at following, which amends several sections of Chapter 9, the county's garbage and refuse chapter. I initiated these considerable changes back in 2014, and they're finally coming to a word that some people don't like fruition tonight. You've seen previous iterations of these proposed amendments several times over the last year or so. The impetus or genesis of these changes was a suggestion by the then Clean Community Coordinator, I think his name was William Bell, back in 2014, who noted that the state's requirement for reporting recycling generators by commercial establishments was every four years. And we require reports every year from commercial entities which generate recycling materials. So his thought was to make consistent that our reporting requirements to the state of once every four years, just have our businesses report to us every four years, which makes imminent sense. So the main change you'll see is to Section 9-49, which is on page 31, which changes the reporting requirements from annually to every four years. But while we were doing this, we figured we'd clean everything else up because it is garbage and refuse. And I did not want to, I did not want to refuse their request.
Oh, gosh.
So one of the suggested revisions was by the Commissioner of the Revenue, Joanne Harris, who suggested a change to 9-37, which is on page 30. Well, am I keeping you up?
Yes.
Yes. Which required that recycling generators, haulers, could not get a license without providing proof to the Commissioner of the Revenue of a license for each vehicle they used. Well, I don't think Ms. Harris does that, did that, wants to do that. So we've taken that provision requirement out, that it has to be for each vehicle used. The administrator requested a few minor revisions, and you'll see those throughout. I don't think there's really any other substantive changes. This ordinance does not necessitate a public hearing, as all ordinances do not. When you had the raising your water and sewer rates, that required a public hearing, which you would want anyway, but that required it. This does not require a public hearing. So I'm available to answer any questions that you may have, but they should be pretty self-explanatory.
Motion to approve as presented.
Questions? Discussion?
Okay. Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Or. Motion carries.
Okay, board appointments.
Mine is still not able to fully retire to participate, but I expect that to happen very quickly. And that's for the Planning District Commission.
Do we have any? Okay, then we'll move on. County attorneys items?
How about the discussion?
Nope.
Turn it over.
The orange one.
Shoot, they're messing, no, they're messing me up. They're giving me two...
We updated the agenda.
They updated the agenda.
And this hard copy wasn't updated.
Nope. Okay, discussion, decision, change the meeting calendar, change the meeting calendar?
Yes, as the board knows, we did a doodle poll. And while we can't get everybody there, the night that seemed to work the best is April 10th. Both the courthouse and TC Walker are available if you would like to meet at either of those locations on that date. And it's requested that you would modify your calendar and the location through motion. We don't have a resolution, but you could do it by motion tonight to modify the board's meeting calendar to add this date and the location that you choose. This is for the meeting with the fire department.
I'd say it needs to be at TC Walker.
That was my, that was my vote as well.
I agree with TC Walker. If we can have it so that we're not sitting sort of in a row, but in a way that we could be facing each other so that we can hear each other and see each other.
Okay.
Okay. Am I in agreement with TC Walker?
Make a motion.
We need to make the motion that we have a...
We need to make the motion that we have a meeting April 10th at TC Walker with, to discuss fire department.
Yes.
Second.
Who's the second? Before the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need a roll call?
Yes.
Time for the resolution.
So Mr. Wilmot brought up a number of questions at one of the meetings, and we had to ask him if he would let us know by email what those questions would be that we would have to have answered. Did I miss something?
He sent them to us. He emailed them to us.
When you ask me to do something, it's done.
He didn't email us.
I have an email.
He said, "It's done."
I apologize. I take, I'm sorry.
You are the master's champion.
What's the mail?
Okay, all right. Yes, sir.
I didn't get to do this earlier, so I need to do it now. One of the biggest emails that I have been receiving lately has a whole lot to do with VDOT. And I just wanted to make the public aware that you can email us, you can email me, but the best I can do for you is put in a work order and send an email myself. There's no magic power that we have that will make anything go any quicker. And so I will continue to do those things, but per discussion I had this week, I just wanted to make it clear to the public that we have no magic power over VDOT.
They have been responsive in a couple of issues, so I got to give some positive things. They did help in a couple of areas of DEAN that helped facilitate, you know, that, so...
Can we finish what we were doing?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Let us just finish what we were doing here with the meeting for...
I think we did.
Are we all done with that? That's all straight?
And then you had your other four.
Okay, then we got to go to our county attorney items next.
I'm glad to be here. However, the 10th of April...
Thank you so much.
I will be there, but I won't be glad to be there because that's my 65th birthday. But I'll, but I'll be there. Just, I will not be glad to be there.
We'll be happy birthday to you.
Okay, now, boards and...
Fire department to put it out.
Too many candles. Boards and commission reports. Then supervisor discussion?
I have one. I just want to make a clarification and do this so it'll be in the minutes. Someone made a comment during public comment about the charges for windmill and all those fees that you pay on your power bill. Probably every two months, VEPCO, which they're still VEPCO, operating as Dominion Virginia Energy, puts out through the State Corporation Commission rider amendments. So all of these amendments have to be dealt with legally and through the State Corporation Commission. So it's out there, it's broadcast. The riders aren't going to go anywhere, so if you were to try to do anything and try to go off grid with solar or something, if you kept a meter on your house, you're going to always pay those bypassable charges. You can't get rid of those. All you can get rid of is the generation and the transmission fee if you decide to generate your own power. So I just want to make that abundantly clear that we don't have any say over that, but you, the citizen, do, and you can follow this and send your comments and provide your feedback when they do this. And I say it's almost every, it's almost every two months they have something like this going on.
Yes, we are. Supervisor discussion?
Now, sorry. Again, just making it clear, JJ, that all we can do is do the same things they do. And so I had that discussion this week with a nice young lady who said, "You should be able to call somebody." Well, I can't call anybody that you can't call, and I can't email anybody that you can't email. And so I just want them to know that we, as a board, don't have a secret phone to call VDOT, and they do whatever we want them to do because that's just not the case.
You weren't issued one?
No, I never want one.
No backhoe for me?
No backhoe for me.
But I'll, you know, when, yes.
Yes, sir.
Someone, I've written at times to our representative, and he has responded back pretty quickly. Yeah, and again, the situation that occurred down in Guinea last year, they responded pretty quickly because that was a dangerous situation. So every once in a while, we see a crack that we can actually make a difference with VDOT. It takes a while, but they were very responsive to fixing part of the road. And they are going to go, whenever it stops raining and we dry, have dry, they're going to dig some of the ditches out down that same area to help the water flow when it comes in so it can get out.
Yeah, I got the same thing in Zenoni where they're supposed to go out and fix some ditches after they clog up. Colors are clogging up, clogged up, and they do those.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hudson?
Something after last Wednesday's meeting, it's been brought up by a couple of people about how productive they thought the town hall meetings were. I'd like the board to consider having either quarterly or twice a year or something, a town hall meeting as we had then. And so the citizens can ask questions, be able to get them answered versus listening to them during public comment, and be able to go that route. I know we just changed the budget calendar, but I think we need to look at it and seriously consider that from throughout the year.
I agree.
See if we can get with Ms. Cronin or Ms. Tyler and figure out a schedule of when TC Walker's available that we could answer questions and go back.
I agree.
I chuckled at Mr. Gibson's issue with the Los Angeles waters. You know, they were trying to protect a smelt, which prevented them getting all the water they needed down there. So it's mismanagement of the ecosystem of their, caused their problems, along with the problems that happened in Hawaii and along with the other problems in Richmond. It's this mismanagement of their system. So you're right. They're, we need to fix, and we voted on it. We need to fix this issue that we've got in Gloucester County.
Further supervisor discussion?
We didn't vote to fix anything. We just voted to increase the rates.
Mr. Hudson, to your, to your, just to piggyback on what you said, one of the things that I heard at Gloucester High School the next day was how much the staff enjoyed you asking questions. Like, not only the community asking questions, but like you asked those young people, "What do you want? What would you like to see?" And a lot of the people that I was talking to said that was very refreshing because not only did, not only was it, not only was it an open dialogue meeting, but we gave it a little personal touch. And so they were impressed.
Well, I try to do a personal touch.
Every now and then.
Sometimes staff don't like my personal touch.
Oh, yeah. Any other supervisor discussion? No closed meeting?
Second.
All in favor?